We'll open the meeting with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is to swear in our new mayor. You can repeat after me. I Hillary Mathis do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota and the charter and ordinance of the city of Wyndham and to faithfully discharge the duties developed upon me as mayor of the city of Wyndham, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability.
I Hillary Mathis do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Minnesota and the charter and ordinances of the city of Wyndham and to faithfully discharge the duties devolving upon me as mayor of the city of Wyndham, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
It's all yours.
Okay. Do you want to read it, or do you want to?
I can read it.
Okay.
I Scott Benson do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota and charter and ordinances of the city of Wyndham and faithfully discharge the duty in developing upon me as a city council member of the city of Wyndham, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and my ability. I don't speak very good, but we'll get through it.
Well done.
Thank you, thank you.
And now we swear in Jason Sherman. Do you want me to read it, or you go ahead and do it?
Yeah, sure.
Good.
I Jason Sherman do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Minnesota and the charter and ordinances of the city of Wyndham and to faithfully discharge the duties devolving upon me as council member of the city of Wyndham, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Okay, everyone got and read the packet? So now we have the appointments. And we'll start with the appointment of the city administrator, which is currently Steve Nasby. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Nasby as city administrator?
I'll make a motion to appoint Steve Nasby as the city administrator.
I'll second.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jim. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion made by Scott, second by Jim. Motion carries. See if I got it?
Thank you.
Okay. Now the appointment of the city attorney, which is currently Ron Schrammel. Is there a motion to approve Ron Schrammel as a city attorney?
I'll make a motion to approve Ron Schrammel as a city attorney.
Second.
Motion made by Dennis, second by Jason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the designation of electronic transfers, which is the city administrator Steve Nasby and the finance director and controller Donna Torgelson. Is there a motion to approve?
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Jim. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the designation of the financial institutes, institutions, which are the banks, BMO, Bank Midwest, United Prairie Bank, Leading Edge Credit Union, 4M Fund, and MultiBank Securities. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion for the financial institutions.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jenny, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then we have the official newspaper designated as a Cottonwood County citizen. Is there a motion to approve?
I would make the motion to approve the Cottonwood County citizen as the official newspaper.
Second.
Motion made by Jenny to approve Cottonwood County citizen as the official newspaper, second by Jason. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we have the city council meeting dates and times, which were in the packet. The first and third Tuesdays of the month at 6:30. Do we need to go over the rest of this about the tentative meeting time for the board of review?
Yeah, the, there's a schedule in the packet that shows the dates and the meetings retaining the first and third Tuesdays at the regular meeting time at 6:30. There is a tentative meeting set for May 6th. That's the board of review meeting with the county assessor's office. That's on a Tuesday, which is before your regular meeting. And then the November 20, or the November 4th meeting is starting after 8:00 because there is an election somewhere in the state of Minnesota and we can't be open while polls are open. So those are the normal typical meeting dates and times for this next legislative year.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the action item in the packet regarding the city council meeting dates and times?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Motion made by Dennis, second by Scott, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now there is the mayor and council assignments. The mayor will be on hospital board, joint government personnel and EDA. Council member Esplin is on street committee, library board, comprehensive plan committee, telecom commission and airport commission. Council member Quaid liquor committee, park and rec, street committee, personnel committee, and economic development authority. Council member Nelson is on housing and redevelopment authority, economic development authority, comprehensive plan committee, tree commission and community center commission. Council member Benson is on liquor committee, community center commission, park and rec commission and utility commission. And council member Sherman is planning commission, joint government personnel and telecom. Is there a motion to approve the assignments?
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's council assignments.
Second.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jason to approve the council assignments. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then we have the consent agenda with minutes from the last city council meeting on December 17th, the housing and redevelopment, the utility commission and the street commission. This is all one motion. And then there's the gambling, exempt gambling permits for bark, Cobra wrestling and the Wyndham Chamber of Commerce head two. All of this was in the packet.
And the regular bills.
And the regular bills. Sweet.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jason. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Department heads. Are there any department heads to speak? No? Okay. Well, moving on then, we've got public comment by Mike Laurie. Is Mike here? Mike's not here? Okay. Moving on to the appointments and reappointments. We've got a reappointment of Christina Wolf on the library board. Her term will expire 2027. Park and Rec Commission, which is a three-year term, Pam Hogan is a reappointment. And Autumn Haughey is a new appointment and their terms will both expire at the end of '27. Telecom Commission, three-year term, Keegan Hoferbert is a new appointment. He, his term expires in '27. Utility Commission, Tom Riordan is a reappointment of a three-year term. His term expires in '27. Tree Commission, Deb Polzin and Joanne Kaiser are reappointments of a three-year term. Their term will expire in '27. Planning Commission is a four-year term and reappointment of Jared Balloon and Brandon Pletcher. Their term will end in '28. Housing and redevelopment authority is a five-year term and a new appointment of Nick Colseth was made. His term ends 2029. And Community Center Commission is a three-year term and Linda Stuckenbrooker is a reappointment ending in 2027. Is there a motion to approve the appointments?
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments and reappointments.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jason, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we have the Wyndham Lions Club is here to speak on a resolution for the authorization to accept a donation of Teagles Park Shelter from the Wyndham Lions Club to the city of Wyndham.
Okay, thanks for letting us come here. I'm Eric Aiken, I'm the president of the Lions Club. Did everybody get a copy of that? Did everybody read it? Okay. Okay, so we just want to thank the city for allowing us to do this. The park and rec of the community, it was our biggest project ever. We're pretty proud of it. And we'd like to, we kind of went in depth on this thing here just to make sure that it's going to get upkeep on it. I mean, we don't want it to go to down the tubes because we put so much effort into it. So Glenn here, Francis, he's on our board of directors. Dustin Thom, he's on that also. Steph Evers, she's our treasurer. So that's who these guys are. And I can tell you, us guys right here and Steph put a lot of time into this. Personal time, personal hours. Steve did too. He was helping us pour cement. Like I said, we worked our butts off on this and, you know, it's huge. And you go by there on any day of the week in the summer and somebody's using that thing. And that's what we wanted. And like I said, we just want to keep it looking good. So in case, you know, for our kids and grandkids and all that, so. We're not done taking donations. We'd still like to get a couple of doors in there. Like eight grand apiece. So we haven't technically been advertising for that, but we still would like to do that. I think the two doors that are in there now make a huge difference as far as like the wind and stuff, so we'd still like to get that done. And that's in there too, so. Like I said, we thank you guys. Had fun working with you guys, appreciate it. If you have any questions, shoot away.
I'd just like to thank the Lions Club for everything they do. You do nothing but give back to the city of Wyndham, so thank you.
Yep, what's an honor for us to do that. And that's what we're all about, so. We appreciate everybody because if it wasn't for the public and everybody else, we wouldn't exist. So.
Look, I have a special thank you to all the donors. The building cost between $250,000 and $300,000. Largest single investment that the Lions Club has made and the donors have given to us that kind of money. And it took us a while to raise the funds, but thanks to a great number of people that jumped in and helped us out financially. Were able to get the building ordered and get it built. And the contractors that did all of the payment and kind. There was contractors in there that basically did all the work, in charge of the dime. So thank you to all of those guys that helped us out to be able to get the project done.
And something that was pretty cool too, and Glenn, you can elaborate on this, is the award. The building award.
Oh, yes. The manufacturer of the building. There's a big, there's a big, I want to say it's a club, not Lions Club, but a building club organization through the manufacturer that, and they have a contest on the nicest building of a variety of different categories. And the category for public pavilion, outdoor, for public use was given to the Wyndham Lions Club. So that's pretty cool.
And I think that's in the serving area, I think, on the wall.
Yep.
We got a plaque in there, so it's pretty cool. We're also doing a, like a donation wall like they have at the arena because we want to recognize everybody. That's, I'm not sure if it's done, but it's going to get done.
They're working on it. It's, it takes a lot of delicate laser work on the metal. So, and that's, that'll be donated to us too.
Yep, we just want to recognize everybody that did that. So when people go in there, they can look at and go, oh, okay, such and such did this or that. It's a big deal for us. Like I said, we put a lot of time into it. It's a lot of stress. So we thank you guys.
Not too bad.
A little bit. But yeah, no, we thank you guys. We appreciate everything. We really do.
As a lifelong resident of Wyndham, we knew what the old shelter house used to look like. And back in the day, it got a lot of use back in the time for its life, to live this life out. But what you guys have done down and give to the city of Wyndham and what we have from now and the future, it really does look nice down there. It does. It took it from one spot, put it up to the top spot. You guys, thank you very much for what you guys have done around here. Appreciate it.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I too would just like to say a huge appreciation to the Lions, all the donors, all the people that worked on it. I mean, it's just going to be a wonderful asset to the city. I mean, we've already been using it, but, you know, just thinking of all the different events that can be held there, from birthdays to, you know, weddings. We've had, you know, bands, all different kinds of things. The church has used that. And you guys have just done a wonderful job and just outstanding work. So thank you very much for helping out the community this way.
Just a quick comment, I love the way that it looks too. I think that the award is well deserved. It helps the general feel in our community when we have nice looking facilities. And I really do appreciate that. And I know many others do too.
We want to bring people in here, you know? Get people to the town and support it.
I just want to say that I've worked with you guys on at least one fundraising effort. And I know what volunteerism is like and I'm super grateful. It's a tremendous asset here and job well done.
Thank you.
Very nice. All right, so do we need to have a resolution?
Yep, you do have a resolution. As you note in the letter from the Lions Club, there were some conditions on it as far as upkeep and also some Lions use of that shelter. So if you decide to accept the donation, it would be with those conditions. And just so you know, that will be part of the, part of the deal, so.
Okay, do we need to read these? Or everyone's read them in the packet?
They're in the packet. If anybody has any questions, now's the time to ask them, but.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, so.
I would introduce the authorization to accept the donation of the Teagles Park Shelter from the Wyndham Lions Club to the city of Wyndham.
I'll second.
Okay, so Jenny has introduced the resolution to accept it and Jim has seconded. I'm sorry, what? Are there any questions?
No.
So now we need to do a roll call.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
So a resolution has been made and approved by roll call. And does that finalize that? And I wanted to do it before and you guys got up and walked away, but I think we should give them a hand. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Bye, guys, thanks for coming. Now we have John Nelson here with an action item regarding the liquor store. Two of them, one of them? Two of them.
John Nelson, liquor store manager. My first recommendation in front of you guys tonight is to hire Tara Kroll as our union part-time assistant liquor store clerk. This is a grade one position. It's my recommendation to hire her at step four, which is 1701 an hour on the 2025 union wage scale with a six-month probationary period. Upon successful completion of her probationary period, a step increase will be received effective Sunday, January 25th. Tony has worked his last shift with the liquor store. Tony's been a great asset for, I think, about two years now. He'll definitely be missed. We advertise at the end of November. Internally and externally, there was no internal applications within the city union. We did receive eight external applicants. On Thursday, January 2nd, five candidates were interviewed. Out of the interviews, Tara stood out as the best candidate for the position. Tara comes to us with previous experience with Riverbend Liquor and also the city of Wyndham. She served many years as a non-union part-time clerk with the liquor store. She also worked for about a year as administrative assistant receptionist at the community center. So her background and experience that are ahead of the other candidates. So it's my recommendation to approve her for that position.
I'll make a motion to accept Tara as a union part-time assistant liquor store clerk.
I'll second. Motion made by Scott, second by Jenny to hire Tara Kroll as the union part-time assistant liquor store clerk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up.
My second recommendation in front of you is to hire two people for non-union part-time liquor store clerks. Those two are Amber Teachout and Baldamero Martinez. In the past, for the past few months, we've been running pretty shorthanded. And we've advertised for this position and we've only had about one applicant. So during interviews of the union part-time clerk position, we asked potential candidates if they'd be interested in joining us in the non-union role. And every one of them said they would be interested. We extended offers to two potential candidates and they both accepted. So with that is my recommendation to hire Amber Teachout at a rate of 1425 an hour and Baldamo Martinez at a rate of 1275 an hour. Both of these wages are in accordance with the non-union part-time wage scale approved last January at the Wyndham City Council meeting.
I'll make a motion to hire the non-union part-time clerks.
I'll second.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jason to hire two non-union part-time liquor store clerks. Is there any discussion?
John, does this pretty much fill you up then?
It does for now. We got some schedules to work out, but hopefully it'll balance. We do got a few people that are kind of on the hook right now. And out of these interviews, I do have another person in my back pocket if we do need them, so.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all, I'm sorry, what? Okay, so I'm sorry, I forgot who made the motion and who made the second.
It was Scott made the motion and Jason seconded.
So motion made by Scott, second by Jason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. New business, is there any new business? Any old business? Council comments. Jim? Really? Jim, do you have any council comments?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Lions too. I wish the upper, the doors were on, but we'll work that out, they'll work out somehow. But I guess that's, you know, that's, I hated to see the old one go, but this one looks a lot better and I'm sure it'll work out very well. And I'd like to welcome Jason and Hillary and Scott to the council. It's good to see that, you know, in a couple more years, there'll probably be some others who'll be leaving too. So it'll be good to have, you know, new people on here that get on listed telephone numbers though. So that's about all I have.
Jason?
Sure. I just wanted to thank the community who have made this responsibility and opportunity available. And I'll do my best.
Again, I want to thank the community for putting in the trust of me, of being your city council member. And remember, we are your guys' voice. If there's anything you need or we can possibly do for you guys, feel free to holler out to any one of us out here and check, I'm an advocate for checking on your neighbors and checking on the old folks in town here because it's getting colder and stuff like that. Check on the pets. Just take care of Wyndham people like we do. And we take care of each other and it's a brand new year, so just be happy with each other. Thank you very much.
I guess, welcome all our new council members and mayor. Look forward to a great 2025 together. The only comment I guess I have is that, you know, we're a small town and when tragedy hits, we come together. And we've had some tragic event happen on New Year's Eve here in our small town. And I think it shows how we come together and support each other. I also like to say a big thank you to law enforcement and the first responders. They were very, very rapidly on scene and assisting. And just knowing that, you know, when that kind of event happens, you know, it's a ripple effect and it affects everyone, whether you know the people or not personally. But just, you know, give a hug to your family and friends and let's enjoy 2025.
Awesome, I like all the comments. I will just say, welcome to the new, well, you're not new. You're old. Welcome back, Jason. And thank you to the rest of you for serving. I think I'm quickly learning, I mean, I've not experienced it being a thankless job, but not that it is, but the hours you guys have put in and do is, I think, something that everyone doesn't realize and it is commendable. And I am appreciative and thankful for each of you. And Steve too, knows his job. Thanks for answering all of my questions. I'm sure there will be more. I would echo everything Jenny said. I've seen the community come together. That was a tragic, tragic event that will continue and ripple on in the community for a really long time. But people are awesome. I've seen it and you just have to. I've seen it, and you just have to make the best of something really terrible. Not that you can make the best of it, but it, I think when Wyndham comes together the way Wyndham does, it's helpful, and we've seen that, so, great point. And I just thank the community, and I think that's all. So, sorry. Oh, I got it, Steve has comments.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Just to let the rest of the council and the public know, we had a visit from ag commissioner, Tom Peterson, today. Commissioner, deed commissioner Matt Varlek was also in town with him. Senator Weber was there, former representative Hamilton, Mayor Mathis, and I, Tiffany from EDA, and Jason Sikora. We had a tour of the plant, they are looking at hopefully getting something up and going by the end of the month, kind of the very first part of that phase. The commissioners were very pleased with what they saw in the renovations of the plant, and how some of the state dollars are getting used. We were also able to run the commissioners up briefly to the Wyndham Landing Apartments, so that they could see those, and how that state money was put in. I had just a few minutes with Commissioner Varlek, and I drove him through the new Semstone Development, because we did get deed money to do the demolition of the old former Semstone Plant, and so he was very excited about that new subdivision going up there. So we had a very productive day with some of our elected officials and strengthened those state relationships.
Yeah, that was cool, and I think if we all didn't want bacon by the end of that tour, it's, that is a really neat plant, and they talk a lot about bacon, and I want to cook some bacon. Anyways, thank you all, that's it, the meeting is adjourned. Do I need to give the time? By unanimous consent, the meeting is adjourned.